All right, good evening. On November nineteenth of two thousand and twenty-four for the planning commission meeting, we do not have a quorum tonight. We don't have enough people here, so we need four to make our number. And there's no one online, so we don't. What we're going to do is we're not going to be doing any of our board roll call. We can although we will, we will say our names here. So we're not, we don't have any approval of agendas or minutes because this agenda won't be able to be done that way. So we're just going to open it up as like an open meeting and it'll go to the B C R C. So just names down the board.
Stacy Boxer.
John Bashy.
Jim Winchester.
And we're just opening it up to B C R C for the presentation.
Thank you, glad to see you guys again. And it's nice to see so many members of the community here to hear the plan. Thank you for coming. I hope you enjoyed your Donuts Insider. And yeah, I guess we can get right into our presentation. Okay, great. So this is our final presentation related to the panel center of village improvement M D G site plan. And this is showing our site planner recommendations. We began this process back in May of last year. And I think we actually had a pre-meeting before we began the real process where we sort of discussed what our process was going to be. So I think this is the third or the fourth time I've been here. But we have been at this particular slide here talking about our project goals at each meeting. And the grant as we were given it and as we are fulfilling it relates to three main project goals, which is to maximize the potential for town green, which is to turn the Central Street Park area into a place that the town of panel finds attractive and useful and wants to utilize on a regular basis. That includes creating and fostering a space to gather, conduct business and recreate. And then, of course, facilitating development in the area as it's associated with that. So the scope of this plan was always beyond the park itself, and it was to the full extent of the Village Center District, which is the area outlined in orange on that map there, the big recommendations map behind you. That is a special designation area that the state has and where work within that area gets special allocations for monies related to grants and stuff like that because we're particularly invested in the state of creating dense downtown areas where clustered development to happen because that's overall less expensive and more sustainable development pattern. So the, we did a series of outreach and community feedback. We had a hundred and one survey responses to our mailer that we ended up putting out. We also promoted that survey at a number of events that we did throughout the town and throughout the summer. We had a hundred and two conversations with individuals at those events and twenty-one in-depth interviews where we took extensive notes on all of this information, the survey responses, the interview stuff will all be included in appendices in our final written report, which we will be delivering to this committee in December. So we also did a series of stakeholder interviews with a number of prominent individuals in the community representatives from panel elementary school, the Oakville Children's Center. The fire department in particular has come up as a very important part of this development. Center Street homeowners, we had a special meeting with those folks. And we had a couple of times where we talked to some of the senior groups that meet at the fire department. What we heard from the community during those time periods was that, you know, panels, beautiful panels, historic panel has a lot of assets that are underappreciated and underutilized. And part of the reason why those are underappreciated and underutilized are because of things like high-speed traffic, because of the area doesn't feel like it's safe for pedestrians and because people just don't have a lot of reason to spend time here. They have, there aren't a lot of businesses where people are doing more than they're just popping in and out to get some convenience goods. So, you know, what the individuals we surveyed said, they wanted things like community gathering spaces, they wanted community events, and they wanted more options like retail and pop-ups to supplement that lack of, that lack of commercial availability in the area. And we asked for desires specifically about the park area and historic area, and it matched very closely to the desires that people also said about the full extent of the village center. So, you know, mostly safe and efficient for people walking, cycling and biking, cycling and rolling, that's for skaters who are rolling or scooters who are rolling. And attracted to new businesses, attracted to new residents. And you see the same thing when you move here, talk about desires for the general area, which stretches all the way from School Street, you know, down to, down to the end of the triangle here. So a little more of that people's abstract or tourism, et cetera. Four items of focus came up when we decided to take all those answers and distill them into the site plans that represented in the posters around the area here. And that is the area should have safety and mobility improvements, that we should focus on preservation and place making, which is celebrating the scenic beauty of the area and letting people think of the area as a place, so it's not just a pass-through. They might still be passing through it, but even if they're passing through it, we want them to think, oh, I passed through panel instead of I just went from Bennington down to the Stewart's. And, you know, Route seven commercial stretch, people want to see the businesses there thrive. They want to see more active business community happening there. And Central Street Park, of course, to expand the amenities there, serve additional residents and have events take place within this village center area. So our safety and mobility improvements, we can talk a little bit about this and maybe one of my colleagues can point to some of the areas in a minute when we get to the, to the map that we're talking about. So we want to think about traffic calming measures on Route seven to reduce traffic speeds and allow for higher visibility. And want to develop sidewalks and bike lanes so that there are options for residents that are more than just driving to and from the village center. And facilitate safe crossings in the area. A lot of the folks who we've talked to looking at the posters today were very excited about the idea of safe crossings, so seems to be a significant amount of community support for that. And then to improve signage and wayfinding so people know that they're in a place that matters and that they can get to the places so they don't get confused on how to get to Town Hall, even if it's just voting day or whatnot. So we did some additional supplemental research so we didn't just hear from the public and just, you know, say, well, they're right about this or they're right about that, you know. We looked and we heard a lot of concerns about safety and about speeding. And we looked into it, and what we did is we did a couple of things. Well, one thing, as you look at, there's a crash map of the area, so over the last ten years, there have been a substantial amount of crashes that have happened in the area, eighteen of them on Route seven here have included property damage, seven of them have included injuries, and there has been one fatality within the last ten years in this village center district. And we also set up a speed timer and we let it run for a full week up in August. And, you know, we clocked fifty-seven thousand cars rolling through the area. That's great because that gave us a certain vehicle traffic count, which helps for a later thing that we did in the area to help supplement our information along with the public, which is a retail market analysis. But what we really found is that fifty-eight percent of the cars driving through town here, and this is in the area that the public had told us is not the highest speed area due to the limitations of our traffic counter, we had to set it up north of School Street, closer to the Dollar General. We were trying to set it up a little bit further south from there, but, you know, our anecdotal evidence from the public was that people hit that School Street and then really hit the gas as well. But even at that spot, closer to the Dollar General, we still found that fifty-eight percent of the people who are driving by are speeding, and that includes all the folks who are slowing down to turn at Dollar General. So the slowest speed we collected, we have people going through with seven, and that's, you know, someone obviously making a turn going into, going into the parking lot there. But, you know, despite all that, the average is still high enough that there's a high probability for enforcement if you wanted to, you know, ask the sheriff's department to come here and start taking care of that. Or you could take other things and do safety and mobility improvements to help reduce traffic from a non-enforcement, to reduce speeds from a non-enforcement level and help people psychologically understand that they're in a place where speeding is not necessarily either a good option and not a safe option and that they should be watching out for pedestrians and for other vehicles in the area because it's an active space. In order to do that, we've, we've, we've considered that there should be some traffic calming and landscaping that happens along Route seven. In the northern section, it's a bit smaller than it is in the southern section, the southern section, especially when you get down near Birmingham Road, it's very wide. You know, that's partially because people and trucks need to get up that hill and there needs to be a very wide line lane. We've kept both lanes the same there and we've requested that in the southern section there be a separated, a separated path facility on the other side of the telephone poles, also still within the right of way. And then on, on the northern section, in the area where there's businesses, we either want there to be a turning lane to accommodate the businesses or we want there to be painted median and potentially the town could, you know, if there's a desire, if there's more commercial demand, eventually put in a regular median, or at least if there was also more desire to do some beautification in the area as well, you could do things like potted plants at a fairly low cost in that space. The widest part of the road, the telephone poles do some weird stuff on Route seven, which gives the widest part of the road actually just at the part where your two most popular businesses are. That's on the left where it says existing on this map, that's Village Market and Video. And then the other side is the Mountain Therapeutic Massage. There's a lot of asphalt between those two spaces, and it also acts right now as one of the most important transportation hubs in the town because it is where the Green Mountain Express operates their bus stop. That is, that we, what we, what we're proposing there is to, you know, narrow the lane widths to slow down traffic, add some turning lanes, and also install a covered bus shelter there to help acknowledge and let people know that there's some activity happening in that space. In the historic center here, there's also a series of sidewalks and bike lanes that we would like to install in the green areas. Really, it's about creating safe pathways for people to walk and communicate. Because the roads here are narrow and because the roads here are quaint, because you're in this, this small, you know, downtown Vermont community, we feel that it's appropriate in this case to allow there to be some mixed use of the, of the space and allow there to be, and with the right markings, we believe we can turn it into a space where you have a, a safe passage for both cars, pedestrians and bicycles while working together, all, all encouraging people to move at slow speeds through this community. And so a shared path, this is the path area specifically. We're asking for a connection there. This is just, just along Route seven. But right now, there's a gate that was just put up very recently, actually, in an area where a number of people cross, cross the street to get to a much safer walking area right now in Central Street. Unfortunately, right now, that gate does not allow there to be any cyclist or pedestrian walking through. We think that should be replaced with baller gates, and we do love that connection. We think that connection should be preserved, but we want to make sure that that access, that connection, you know, right now it's just blocking cars, but it's unfortunately just blocking everyone. We think the baller replacements will be a great way to do that, and you can still, you know, you need a key to open that gate, and you also need a key to just take that baller and tip it down and be able to roll right over it. So it would still have access if there was any need for emergency services to use this space to get into the Town Hall area. And this is the area, and then we believe the use that I said right now, people are often coming here, they're walking up Central Street, you know, you got somebody coming slowly going back and forth to their home, you have other folks, the dumpster company coming down here, and you've got the number of folks coming back and forth to the park. And it's generally a safe walking area, and we want to extend that sense of being able to share the street with cyclists and with pedestrians all the way down Central Street until it gets to that School Street point. To do that, we're recommending what they call an advisory shoulder, which is just painting some dashed lines on either side of the road. It's not an extremely common thing here, but it is practiced in a few places in New Hampshire and a few places, other places in Vermont. And it's very common in the U K, and it doesn't, it retains two-way traffic, which is a nice feature for residents in the area, but it also encourages people to move at slow speeds and it fits really well for rural context, so I think it works really well for panel. The other thing is a key intersection, which is the North Powell Road and Central Street intersection. You know, there's not a lot when people turn on North Powell Road and they are driving down, they kind of just speed right past Center Street without really acknowledging or you don't really, there's not a lot of cues for you as a driver to think, there might be some reason why I need to turn here, or there might be some reason why I need to be concerned about pedestrians or cyclists or other traffic even coming, coming at me in this area. And we think that a small, what they call a mini roundabout, a rollover mini roundabout would be appropriate for that space. These are often very small neighborhood level roundabouts. It's not a big one like, you know, the one in front of the Walmart in Bennington or anything like that. This is just something that's, you know, going to be able for you to roll around very quickly. You'll have to slow down a little bit, but it's not going to be a particular turn for you as you go through it. But it will acknowledge for people that there is something important to turn at the space for and act as a de facto gateway for the civic center and for the park space. And the other thing is safe crossings. So I mentioned earlier, so there are a number of crossings in key locations, specifically School Streets, Barber Pond Road and Burrington Road, where there is active pedestrian and cyclist used at this time. And we think that it's, the state should be more responsible and allow there to be safe crossings in those spaces. And by creating this pathway network that I talked about earlier, it'll really make it a lot easier for people to use and it'll encourage more people to use those spaces. So it's a great way to stitch panel center in with all of the communities that are to the west and to the south of us in the town here. The other thing too is our pathway network for the town includes this fun little protected pathway space on all sides of the park, which kind of extends the use of the park space a little bit outward, is sort of just building some additional square footage of your park. And, and the nice thing is it maps out perfectly, so it's exactly a third of a mile. So if you've got somebody who wants to run a mile, they can just do three loops and they know exactly how far they've run. If you've got a group of seniors who are meeting down at the firehouse and they want to come and do some, you know, some walking and some cardio, it's a great way for them to keep track of what they're doing, they don't all need a Fitbit to do it. So the other thing is the safe walking path, we really feel will create a great network effect between the existing school playgrounds and the other facilities that we're putting here at the park. So that's our safety and mobility angle. Talk a little bit about the preservation and place making actions that are, that are in our, in our plan. And this is also about meeting community desires. So again, when we had these community meetings and we got feedback from everyone in the town here, you know, one of our most important things were to preserve and celebrate the history of the area and also foster a sense of place so people want to know that there's something here. And that's what place making really is, is to sort of, you know, making an area that's a pass-through into a place where people just acknowledge is there and want to spend time in. So, you know, one of the main things about panel that we heard is viewpoints are extremely important. So there is a, is a recommendation here to consider viewpoints on Route seven and even think about some areas, and we haven't identified exactly where, but there might be some spots on Route seven that are further south than the village here, where people might want to pull over and just have a view shed, have a, like you'd have on, you know, the Taconic Parkway or something like that, where you just have a small pullover and allow people to just admire the views. A couple of spots on Route seven that have great views except for the fencing that's there, and there might be some way to facilitate that and to allow people again to sort of think about panel and acknowledge that it's a, that's a place there. The other part of that is, is that the planning commission might be interested in suggesting a scenic assessment related to how they do building, building regulations and lots in the future. So because everybody's very concerned about the view, because they were really very concerned about how, you know, how to preserve that, you know, it's not about zoning here in panel center that really we have to worry about, it's actually zoning on the hills, the mountains that you're looking at from panel center here. And so some places like Land Grove have a very strict, you know, here's, here's these areas, they need to be, you know, the buildings need to meet certain requirements, you have this much, you know, woodland and stuff like that and forests. The good news here is a lot of stuff is already preserved, you have a great big park space that you're looking at for most, for, for some of the views here. But there are specific view shed zoning regulations or tools you can put in your legislative handbook that if the town wishes to incorporate that, they can do so. There would have to be a whole specific study that is separate than that, but we will outline some potential grant opportunities if that's what the planning commission is interested in pursuing in the future. The other thing is wayfinding and historic signage. The town's already done a very good job of beginning this sort of branding exercise with the town offices and this, you know, forest access and all this stuff like that. So we want to expand and build upon that. You want, we want to see some town offices and directional signage probably in the same fonts and choices, you know, put in certain areas either close to Route seven, definitely on that North Powell Road near that rollover roundabout and stuff before. And then there are other opportunities to do historic signage and just information in the area like this, this nice, you know, sort of curved sign that they put up in Bennington that talks about different opportunities in the town. And that is a big one. So the biggest part of the proposal here is, is talking about moving the existing firehouse across the road to what is now currently a brownfield site. So one of the biggest hurdles towards this area really developing and even feeling like it has a place is, is there's not a lot of visual identity to the space when you are traveling on Route seven. And we feel that a nice big public amenity like, and an attractive centerpiece building like a firehouse would work well as a anchor so people would have, again, that, that sense in their mind that they're driving to and through a space, a place where people live, where activity happens. And we think that this big brown field that you have in the middle of, of your village district here just needs to be addressed and that the firehouse is the, is the perfect tool to do that because the firehouse is in desperate need of an update and may, and the current firehouse may not even meet FEMA regulations related to how equipment is stored and everything, just because they have a very small amount of square footage available to them for their storage spaces here. They've already limited the size of the trucks they can buy and things like that right now. So there are a lot of legal issues with that and specifically enrolling the town and the property owner into something called the Brella Program, which my colleague Jim Henderson is already in preliminary talks with the Select Board about doing. What we also feel is that that space is large enough that there is a way to subdivide the lot after it has been remediated, after the toxics have been cleaned up off the area, and that may, and some development on that space likely residential because the way we develop a plan here is that we want the firehouse to face Route seven, but have the driveway access be both on Center Street and on North Powell Road. We think that some residential development might help the town be able to offset the costs of cleaning that up. And so that's the civic tree building there, we think is a great way to inspire civic pride. But we also think it's a great opportunity to create an informational area for the town. Now, the, you know, knowing about what's going on was one of those things that came up again and again and again in our surveys, folks were just like, I know there's stuff going on in town, but I don't know what it is or had access to it or whatnot. You know, we know that the folks here at the town office, they're already running a social media page, they're already posting stuff on the town website, but for some reason that's not getting through to the people. And we think that this is a great way that folks who are driving by every single day will get a little bit of a reminder, and maybe they won't get all the information that they, that they need from here, but they'll know that there is a, Celebrate Panel Day is coming in the date, and then they'll be able to then get all that additional information by going to the town website and social media. It's just another great reminder for people about the things that are happening in the town and let them know what's going on. Now, right now, you know, twenty-four square feet is the limit for signage. And if the planning commission wishes to install something like this, they would have to either give a variance if they wanted something bigger. There is a way to fill this right now to town standards. If it wasn't digital, you could have the letters that, you know, you know, can, can be replaced back and forth on and off there. That is a possibility as well if the town wants to continue to keep it analog instead of digital. But it would need a variance right now or a change in the town code that the planning commission would have to facilitate in order to install a digital sign and have a sign that's slightly larger than twenty-four square feet. Twenty-four square feet is only the area that displays a message though, so, you know, your brick, you know, or other housing for that sign doesn't necessarily have to be included in that twenty-four square feet. Then here's another one, the Old Town Hall, this is a complicated one, and we don't have an extremely clear answer for this because some of the legal issues on the Old Town Hall are still up in the air and, and, you know, but it is a building that we have looked at, we looked at an energy assessment that happened in the, of the Old Town Hall, and it's not, it's not in terrible shape. You know, it is something that we, what they were calling, it could have some benign utilization until there's some higher or better use that's figured out for it or until all that legal stuff is there. You know, we think that it could have some possible town uses either, but it shouldn't be a public facing office and that all the public facing activities should continue to be in this space. So something like the town constable or something that might not have as much need for the public to interact with could be located there temporarily, maybe, maybe, you know, some office space for the highway department or something. But it's, you know, we feel that there's a way that it could be used, you know, at least temporarily until something better is figured out for it. And it's also potentially another piece of property that if you have a developer coming in and potentially doing some space with the old firehouse area and with some new lots that are coming in, or maybe an additional carrot that could be added, that package if the town desires to no longer utilize this space and just focus all their efforts and their office space in this building we're in now. We have a thing is in front of that space though, we would like to preserve the, and sort of extend the idea of the park space a little bit. We think there should be some kind of a memorial plaza in the area in front here. There's a, there's a small memorial to, you know, fire service members that would have to be moved anyway. And there is a, you know, there's an existing bell there, there's a flagpole, sort of got all the pieces, but there's kind of nothing happening there, and we think that there's a way that you could encourage a little bit of activity, maybe have a few ceremonies on important holidays there and, you know, support it in collaboration with panel historical society. This could also be a space where you put in some of that more in-depth signage to maybe talk about the panel's veterans or where the history of, you know, how panel has set people to serve, you know, overseas and things like that here. So we think that that's a, a nice space that would also sort of extend the idea of a park to other parts of the panel center area here. And then we have the Route seven commercial stretch here, so this is, these are now a series of recommendations specifically related to commercial activity in the area. So, and we're looking at doing some work on the streetscape, again, the North Powell Road intersection, we want to make sure with the, with the firehouse there, it's all, you know, the turning lane is proper, leery size and everything, so all that needs to be, needs to be done. But we think the North Powell Road intersection is also similar, like I said before, that when you're on North Powell Road, you don't go to Center Street, and when you're on Route seven, you don't notice North Powell Road. So we think that improving the streetscape would help people recognize that that's an important intersection. And by doing that, it also, I'm going to repeat myself a little bit with some of the stuff here, so all this, you know, supports itself, the commercial work supports the mobility work. Which smarts uh the park work. Um but what we did do, excuse me, uh what we did do to support this. Is we looked at a lot of folks, like I said, in the survey area before, they asked about um additional businesses in the area. And what that might look like. Um we took the traffic count and we took just other information that's available like. Income data and demographics and um you know, we did an analysis and we realized that there's really not any additional demand from a. From a commercial retail perspective, force more square footage in the area and that there's just a number of vacancies in the space that we want to try to activate instead. Um and also that the types of uh retail opportunities that are available are are more of your more neighborhood goods and services that people aren't gonna be. Um really looking for um, people are looking for more quick in and out spaces. Uh as far as the or the market analysis says that people are looking for quick in and out spaces and that people are looking for food and beverage opportunities in the area as well. Um and that any focus in the area should, any focus of the of the town shouldn't be to say, well, we want to start zoning. The Center Street area to have commercial on it too. We want to do mixed use. Uh after this analysis, seems like we should really just focus more on improving the commercial spaces that already happen. And uh and for us, we think that that also, that includes making the areas, traffic move a little slower in the area so people know that businesses exist. Um once traffic's moving a little slower, we're still gonna get the same amount of cars moving through. Um but they're gonna know that there are opportunities here to to do some business, so we're trying to to do that. And we think that that'll help. Uh create a space and identity for the area. Um and again, uh we think that the public investment in creating that can spark interest in the vacancies, hopefully lead to more development opportunities in the area. And there's really no change or no need to change uh anything like the underlying zoning in the area. It's everything that we're sort of recommending here. Is consistent with the uses and we think that the um the value that could be brought to the area are is really based on doing some of them. Mobility investments as we've outlined here. Um and again, the signature building will help support that. And in addition to that, uh we think that there should be uh wayfinding. Uh added to the area. Wayfinding is just direction signage, let people know that there's things. Um you could put on Route seven. Uh a sign that says, you know, one tenth of a mile, make a turn on North Powell Road. Uh town offices and people will know that there's town offices there. You can put a spot for the new recreation area uh across the Dean Road Bridge. Uh you know, so people can can see that and you can get, and there's just a whole bunch of series of icons the town can choose from. And it's an annual fee uh for for you to put up a sign there. And once that's up, some other folks in the community might say, oh, hey, look, I want to also add mine there. You might get the Christmas tree farm, uh you know, that said, oh, we wanna, we wanna also be part of this advertisement or some other group. Uh other businesses in town might have opportunities where they want to also let people know that if they turn on North Powell Road off of seven. Um that there are more things uh for people to do uh in the town of panel aside from just drive through until they get the benefit. Um then uh Center Street Park, so here are our our series, uh sort of uh improvements that we're proposing for Center Street Park. So again, uh you know, we're trying to meet community desires here, but we we lean heavily on uh some past plans that have been presented to this planning commission in the past. Uh and that includes um work by a UVM student that was presented this summer and the Vermont Health and Communities Initiative, uh which did a. A a plan to help uh the park and think about how um having a park in this space can help improve health outcomes overall in panel. Um so we're following some of the same design principles uh that those plans have laid out. Um which is kind of reduce clutter. There's a little bit of a C with six practice. I think there's a little too much uh available in the. Uh you know, I can pull cornhole out of the shell, uh uh out of the end of the shed kind of a thing. Uh we think things should be a little simpler, a little easier to maintain. If you're gonna have a skate park, have it be a skate park and do that skate park part well. But then there are also some other things that can be sort of mixed use spaces. Um. So um you know, I guess the skate park and the basketball are frequently used. We want to reserve that specifically. But then we're gonna also um expand some of the uh town spaces here. And then again, move at a pace where um it's feeling like. It's organic and things are moving in the same way um that are that that generally people, there's been a lot of investment in community ownership in this park. And we want to be able to maintain that and and we hope the parks and rec committee will continue to work with uh the community in a similar way. To uh as things develop in the future. Um but the other thing is we want to bring in the public to here to let them know that a space even exists in the first place. And we think of programming, um having events uh specifically here. Um there's one of our uh suggestions is an amphitheater. Uh to build a small amphitheater in the space and then to also build a food truck platform in the space. Uh and we think that those will support. Um some additional um usage overall, um not just on the days where we're having those things, people will just. Begin to associate the space as a place where they can go and will go more frequently. Um one of those things is a is a small playground space. Uh so we want to have a complimentary playground. Uh to the, uh this is the current uh panel elementary school playground. Uh so we want to have things. That are complimentary to the offerings at this one. Uh one thing that we noticed is there isn't space there that's uh segregated. Or or really set for really little kids. A lot of folks who like to go with toddlers to playgrounds, they don't like to have. Um those really young kids interact with the older kids and get bossed around and things like that. So uh we think that maybe that might be a niche for uh a playground space. Here at panel center park. Um and then, you know, I it'll allow for sort of kids to start coming here when they're very young and then continue coming here. Uh coming to be to the zone uh by going to the elementary school later as they age up a bit. Um and then just more important things like letting people know that there are signage available, you know, announcing the availability of bathrooms in the town hall. Um instead of people just having to do, use the porta potty and things like that up there. Um also just install some other basic amenities in the area. We think that um wouldn't be terribly difficult to put in some. Um some lighting, uh uh water is a little bit trickier, but um you know, you're you're fairly close to the town offices here. My and it's gravel dropways, so hopefully it wouldn't be too hard to to run a little bit of water pipe out there to to have a um a water fountain. And if you want extra credit points, you can have uh one that allows you to, some people who are walking their dogs to to get a drink too. Um that water, I think, would be a great amenity too, because a lot, because there's a lot of cycling and in the area and people would want that as a uh stopping point. So they could refill uh instead of going on hot days. Um and lighting, of course, we want to make sure that lighting is um is uh appropriate and we're dealing with all the keeping everything quaint and keeping. Uh all of our view sheds and everything in great tact, so I make sure that when we do lighting, we follow sort of dark sky initiative. Um rules and uh and even for the sake of um keeping the area limited hours and making the neighbors feel like they still live in an area. That is there, you can turn the lights off at certain hours so that people don't continue to uh spend time in the park uh once park hours were officially closed. Um there's also some concepts, uh you know, safety and management. So you know, if you're installing lighting already, you're gonna have the electricity there. You might as well put in a couple of cameras too, just in case there were some, you know, concerns from some of the immediate neighbors about that and uh. And that's a fairly simple thing to go uh to at least discourage, um you know. Mal activities from happening in the area. And um again, if you're already putting some electricity out in that direction, I think it's reasonable. Um that uh, you know, yeah, but but a lot of a lot of what happens at the park is really gonna be up to the town and how much they want to invest. Uh in that sort of parks and rec committee and how much they can, they can put towards things like staffing. Uh and how much they might also want to invest in something like the constable or bringing the sheriff's department in to to do more patrols or just check-ins on the area too. So a a lot of the safety uh and management stuff is gonna depend on the town's uh desire for a continued. Investment budget items in the space here. Now, the other thing here is uh, last thing here is a Center Street Park. Um we can think that there's a space to put in a pavilion of a a small amphitheater area. Um what that looks like, again, there needs to be a specific designer to come in and do that. Uh this is the kind of thing that would have to, you know, be funded uh through rent money. But there's a natural slope and we don't think it would be particularly difficult to build. Um we also think that, again, this. In the idea of maximizing utilization of space, there was some call for some kind of a uh pavilion space in the. In in Center Street area for people who wanted to maybe have a small wedding or for people who want, you know, see, this town hall, right? So you know, someone wants to have a wedding, might not have the justice of the peace walk down to the amphitheater to have it instead of there. So people people order the pavilion there and have it instead. And I would think that that might work well. Um and yeah, but again, be rented out for people if they just wanted to have a sweet sixteen party or, you know. Baby showers, something like that in the summer. Um we think that that might be a nice opportunity for the town to have more activities take place here. Um and then uh the other thing is the the food truck and event tablet pad, which I mentioned earlier. Um you know, we think that the. Uh the pad can be a little bit of extension to uh skating and the basketball, but then you could turn those skating, you know, part off. You know, for for the areas when you have a food truck, you just for roll them up. Um and there's a, we'd have put a spot next to the current uh. Skate pad there. Um you and over here, we're gonna adding lighting, want to make sure that there's good lighting. So if you want to have a. Tuesday night event uh where you've got food trucks coming uh in the middle of December, um they might, you know, if it's every Tuesday, you know. Lighting isn't a big deal if it's running late o'clock, uh you know, in June, but it's a big deal if it's if you're trying to have food truck parked there, uh you know, until. E P M uh in the center uh for people to to come and access stuff. So uh we think that that's creating sort of a designated space for them there. And sometimes trucks, depending upon them, like to hook up to your electricity too, so that could be an option you want to offer to them. Um and the other thing too is uh, you know, we want to make sure that as all this development happens, that the parks and rec committee, uh our users. Um are all mindful of being a good neighbor to the community that exists here on Center Street. Um so. Um one of those things is noise concerns, you know, uh. There were some suggestions to expand some more recreational uses in the area uh in our surveys that ultimately we decided that. More um programmatic spaces were more valuable, um so that when there are things like noise concerns, that they're limited in scope. Um and limited hours and it's something that the town can permit uh accordingly. And also that uh, you know. But we do want to preserve the existing uses that are already here, but without expanding more activities. So I want to preserve uh basketball, which appears to be popular. And skateboarding, which appears to be popular. Those are the main activities that uh as we came and visited the park on multiple occasions, we saw people engaging in and really doing in the area. So um uh there was also an expression of parking concerns specifically at the um. At the Center Street uh neighbors association uh meeting that we had here and uh and that encouraged us to do a general. Of just a look at all the parking area. There's sixty four existing spaces uh that between the this town parking lot and the and the lot down there. Um and you don't really feel that because they're just big gravel pads, at least that one down there. And we think that that would do encourage people to use the space properly. And to most efficiently be able to use that pad. We think that you can install some just wheel stops in the area, simple, easy fix. The town um highway department could probably do that, you know, and do that at very low cost uh in 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 a few weeks. It's gotta get a mold to pour concrete into the into that set, into that shape. And um you know, that's one of those real quick, easy fixes. Uh also just, you know, if you you already got the paint down, the town's doing things like uh painting stripes on the road. We think the same thing, they could just paint a couple of stripes on the road over next to the church and just let people know these are spaces where when you have voting day or town meeting day. You know, we we want to encourage people to come in space. And then long term, um you know, when the fire department is eventually developed. There will be some additional parking opportunities for folks over there too, as the as the area grows and as the popularity grows, uh that fire department will come in. And um and I'll also be able to absorb some of the space, uh some of the parking needs for the town. So um overall, uh we feel that our plan was very responsive to the engagement data that we got. Uh so we're focusing on panel resident usage. Um we want to create landmarks and a sense of space in the area, a sense of place. Um we're trying to create more opportunities for. For the public to use this space, trying to create more gathering spaces for the community. Um and uh we we would hope that this really helps highlight the same beauty of the area, um improve safety for everyone. Um and uh yeah, gives the town some opportunities to 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 not only provide a service to the to the community, but also connect with the community. Um you know, by by holding events and by branding uh and letting them, letting them know it there and creating messaging in forms of that board, so. Um and we feel like all this is also very responsive and consistent with our reports and additional data. So um as far as that limitation goes, the idea again is to start small and build over time. Uh you know, there are some things that are longer timelines. Uh I'm encouraged by the fact that the select board is already. Uh in initial talks with a coworker of mine about getting the town involved in the umbrella program and working with the property owner for the brownfield site. Uh that is a long term, that is gonna be a years and years long process to get everything uh everything done there, but. Uh I think if we have a clear vision of what you want to do there, it's possible. Um and um you know, there are some things that are much shorter. And can be done right away. Like I said, too, with the wheel stops, that like I said, I think the town uh highway department could pull it off and just get that done in the spring real easy. Um also just sort of gets put in a work order. Um the uh other things, um you know, are gonna be partially based on grant cycles, so. Uh when you can get the transportation infrastructure, it's gonna depend on whether you get the grant, whether you, and and if you don't get it this year, then you're gonna apply for it next year. And you're gonna have to wait until the the cycle comes around again. Um same thing with a lot of park amenities and things like that, so. Um you know, uh we've identified a a number of programs, there's the ready program, there's better places grants, there's lots of grants available from V-Trans. Uh specifically for bike to ped stuff. Um and then there's additional work like the municipal planning grants, which is uh the kind of thing you could use, again, if you wanted to have. Some changes to your view shed quarter, so um if that planning commission is interested in creating things like that, then that's, that's the kind of thing that municipal planning grant would help with. Uh and then, of course, there's some legal processes that also need to uh shake out over time. And again, the the. Um specifically the brownfield program is related to that, but um you know, there's a couple of other things too, like the uh paint on the side of the roads. Um in some ways, it's easy to just put in uh those advisory shoulders, but in other ways, you have to go to the Department of Agency of Traffic and just say. This is a program and we need to do, you know, there there's some paperwork associated with that. Um so all of that will be, the the basic steps will be outlined. In in our process here, in our in our final report. Um and so just to let you know, project schedule, we did uh start this in January twenty twenty four, I guess. So uh we had our project kickoff meeting with you then, that's when we first met with you. Um then we spent a couple of months just sort of drafting our outreach plan. Um we implemented that plan uh between over the summer. Uh and uh and now as uh, you know, now it's November twenty twenty four, so we're on the schedule here for our presentation of our presentation of our findings on our. General report. Uh but you know, we have one final thing to do and that's to to finish putting it all together, uh putting it on paper. And then handing you an official paper copy. And that's uh, this is our last opportunity for feedback from the public here. So I'm glad we have a good number of the public here to uh listen to this plan and to uh hear what we've put together. And uh you know, we've had some informal conversations with you guys uh, you know, during our um reception before this meeting. Uh and those have been very valuable and we're gonna take those into consideration as we continue to write the report. Uh but if there's any official public statements or things the planning commission would like to do, uh we're also here uh to hear those from your references here tonight and now. And so uh yeah, if there's any questions or statements, uh one is feel free to speak them now, but also if you're a. Uh type of person who wants to sit and think about this for a little bit, or you're not the type of person who wants to uh speak in public, then you are more than welcome to. Give us an email, shoot us an email at sea fish burn at B C R C V T dot org. That's Callie over here and she will make sure to. Um you know, get back to you and 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 make sure that all of your concerns are addressed and brought to us as we uh enter that final stage of drafting this report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very nice job.
So any, any thoughts from the planning commission?
You guys got anything? We've been through this many times. I've been here sixty years. Paul's doing well. We got the new town office. We got the park here. Paul's not a close town. He never was a close town. You have like four towns here. You have four or five fire departments back in the old days. Some kids went to school Williamstown, some went to North Adams, some went to Bennington, some went to Hoesing. They never really grew up together. They're young, older people. They were village around the firehouses, the Christmas parties, the weddings and whatever. Was at the firehouses. Just now, I think right now, Paul's coming together. And uh there's a lot of new people here, love new ideas. Takes money. Yeah. And uh. You know, right now, the firemen want a new firehouse, which they deserve. And I think they're focusing on that as much as anything. To get that on the ballot. We're gonna vote for. And, uh, up the west, as we want to know. They're good people, they're volunteers, and they've been here a long time. So, great presentation. Wish list, a lot of wish lists. Hey, we're working on it. You got to start someplace.
Okay. Um, I guess we can take it to solve it too, yeah.
Yeah, anybody else, uh?
Maybe.
Oh, yeah, um, just a couple of quick things. Um, you folks are probably where the Western Union Greenway, um, if you're not, it's worth checking to just the, um, you know, this path that you're looking at, kind of Long Route Seven does a huge amount to sort of, um, connect this really important section of that bike trail through town. Um, so I think there's sort of room to kind of, um, piggyback on each other there for fundraising for that. Um, and then also the, um, this sort of trolley path, uh, uh, project, um, you know, they've kind of, I'm on the board for that too. And, and sort of, we're kind of getting the corner realizing that sort of trying to get trolley path in Pownell is not really a viable thing to do. So the trolley path folks are also looking at sort of aligning along that Western Union Greenway, which runs that same little corridor on Route Seven, sort of between Burlington and, uh, Barrow Pond Road. So again, there's sort of good synergy there with all that stuff. Um, yeah, I guess that's it.
Yeah, thanks for, thanks for bringing that up. That was, uh, something we talked about regularly, but somehow I, uh, neglected to, to put a bullet point in and remind myself of during the, uh, presentation. But that is definitely one of the things we considered is, uh, how this, uh, bicycle and trail, safe walking, safe biking network, uh, would connect, uh, not only to, you know, the immediate community members, uh, you know, to the, to the, to the west and to the south of here, but, um, you know, to, to those other, uh, trail building projects, projects that are happening in the region.
Great.
Oh, you, one other question, sorry. Um, just in terms of fundraising, like, does B C R C have any resources or like sort of, sort of support to kind of help give people guidance on how to go about kind of writing grants for this type of thing? Or like, are there any other good resources we should know about for, for starting that process?
Oh. Well, you got a great skate park, uh, where'd she go?
She couldn't stay.
Oh, she couldn't stay. You know, uh, so we, uh, B C R C has, uh, limited resources when it comes to, to, to helping groups, but you know, for, for in our, um, core areas, which, you know, around transportation and land use, um, you know, we, we are pretty knowledgeable about what's there and what the cycles are. And, uh, and we do, um, you know, we do work with communities to apply for grants. Um, but as far as fundraising efforts go, when it comes to asking money from private donors or from, um, foundations, uh, things like that, uh, we're not as experienced as specifically working with, uh, within the sort of government grant pipeline.
But I will say that, um, two of the programs on one of those last five, so the ready program and the better places programs are not just grants, but they sort of help municipalities facilitate. Uh, like the ready program helps municipalities apply to grants or navigate the grant application process. So it's more like a, uh, a program that supports municipalities going after other grant opportunities. And then Better Places has some fundraising perks. Um, so there, some of those can also kind of help advance your interest beyond just, um, getting a grant, but navigating the whole process and, and yeah, B C R C helps with that too.
Uh, it looks like there's a question online. Someone named Jim has their hand up.
Jim Kosis. Down there, Jim. Hello, Jim.
I'm sorry, it's a little troubling with the muting and unmuting here. So, um, thanks Hannah. Um, Jim Kosis up North Mason Hill Road. First of all, I just, but, um, I'm, I'm appalled that the number of, um, planning commission people did not show up for this meeting that, that we've been putting together for the whole summer. But I'll put that aside. Um, after the whole presentation, I had to, I had to pinch myself because it is a, um, it's a wonderful presentation. I'm, I'm just a little wondered, wondering if, um, B C R C knows this is Pownell. And I have, I see no way similar to what Jim said, is there's so much more we need, um, done in town to clean up certain areas. And people are trying to survive the best they can. Um, I, I, I think maybe this is a great start, but I mean, it's got to be scoped down into a small little section of basically the area around the town hall, the church, and the playground there. I don't think we can afford, even if it comes with grants and everything else like that. Um, I, I don't think the town of Pownell can really afford what you just presented, but I'm, I've got my fingers crossed that maybe in, um, my next life, um, it will be there. But, um, I do have to say that, um, grant monies that can get this all started will eventually just end up with us having to pay for it by town funds. The grant funds, similar to the school districts, you get grants and they dwindle down, dwindle down until eventually the town has to take over it. But, um, I, I just hope this whole project could go on, but I, I, I would hope that we could just scope it down just a little bit smaller to what we really, 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 really need and not have a pipe dream of what we need in Pownell to bring business or get the existing businesses that are on the street there. And maybe the playground, um, utilized a little bit more, um, for, um, local functions. I do not think Pownell is going to be the destination point. Um, but, um, yeah, there's got to be someone that comes out and says these comments. So I thank you very much and you, you guys all have a good night.
Thank you.
I'd like to, uh, if I may, so unless you want to respond?
Which is the last bike.
He's, he's on me again. Someone?
No, fired.
Sorry. That's better. Okay. Um, great. Was there, or?
Unless you had someone waiting.
No, no, oh, yeah, no, no one else, I can see.
Um, Tom Zolfer, Center Street. Um, I first want to compliment, um, B C R C and the staff, um, on the job you did, not only on what you produced, but the process. I mean, you were so responsive to the people of Pownell. Um, two hundred responses is a lot, even in a town that, you know, there's obviously more people than two hundred, but it's a pretty good. You, you made a real effort. And I was here initially when the planning commission was emphasizing how important that was going to be. Make sure you cover all your faces, you know, just don't hear from people with big mouths or whatever. Um, so compliments, um, to your effort and to what you produce, you know, I had some concerns. Uh, I think it's a really wonderful, um, proposal. Obviously, you know, there's realities and things. Um, but, um, I had a, a question for the planning commission. I, I don't know, do you have a, like a ten year town plan that some towns have?
Every five years.
How is this, would this, would you say this dovetails? Does it advance the town plan?
Uh, it was just redone, uh, in, if I remember right, nineteen. So we're, I'm planning again to, to start working on that again. Yes. We're going to, we're trying to revise things, make sure all the laws are in place in it. And, uh, we just got a list of things from the state that I have to look through. So it's, 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 it's going to be a process still of doing that, but, um, we're on line to, to be doing a, a revision of that. So.
And just from a first impression, would you say this sort of marries with, goes together with what you?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think a lot of this presentation, as far as myself, my own opinion of it, I think it's, it's definitely stuff that's going to be helping Pownell out. Um, how it works into the new town plan or existing plan and, and new laws, um, is what we have to juggle here. Um, hopefully. Some revisions. Right. So, so it's going to be, I mean, there's, it's that process that we do have to get through. Um, and see how those all fall into it. Um, I think the plan worked, you know, I agree with Jim on some of the stuff. Um, I don't know if it's a, it's a big plan. Um, it's a lot out there. I don't know how much of that stuff Pownell will be able to do or get to. Um, my only thinking behind it is, uh, down the road, again, like Jim says, taxes on everybody. What's, is that the beautifying of town, what does that do to tax, tax rates later?
So, um, so one thing I would say is, is that long-term maintenance costs for things like sidewalks and bike paths are actually fairly low. Um, you know, cars weigh a lot more and, and actually truck traffic is, is really what, what hurts your roads the most. Um, and, uh, and so, you know, these, there's those low weight options, your, your asphalt, your concrete is going to last substantially longer. Uh, we also made a, a significant effort to try not to create anything that was particularly, you know, some things like the amphitheater are a bit of a, uh, a bit of an investment, but you know, something that's not particularly, um, difficult for the town to, to maintain. It is, it's just going to be sort of a facility that, that exists there without some regulation. And some things like electric use and expanding things out there is a bit more, you know? Um, but, but when it comes to, you know, expanding the bike paths, uh, when it comes to, you know, like I said, the, the Center Street, a lot of it is just paint on the road, uh, and, and all those stuff that we've looked at, we were not asking for any eminent domain. We're not asking for anything that's sort of really out, out of reach. And, and we don't believe that any of the amenities that we've requested or anything like a park, like a white elephant, that's just going to be a big investment. It doesn't, you know, do anything for the town. I think it's, they're mostly just, um, moderate, uh, size, uh, size investments that, that won't take a lot of long-term maintenance. Now, some of course, and some is, you know, some is obviously something the town needs to, um, express a will and a desire to continue to maintain. Uh, but, but it is, uh, you know, we feel that our scope is reasonable for a town of this size.
Hey, I don't think there's a better walking area than the Burlington Road. The Burlington Road is a beautiful place. It's slow. It's the old route, way, Road Route Seven. Well, and it just, it's quiet. It's, uh, I don't know, what, what do you call the Pownell of your mind? Do you call it in Pownell Center or do you call it in South Pownell?
So technically it's just outside of the border legally.
No, I know where it's at, but where does it fit in Pownell, you know? I've often thought people are looking for a, a place to eat, that'd be a good place. There's enough room in there to have a little coffee shop.
Yeah, they've got, they've got a beautiful space there. And I mean, they, actually they're, I mean, they, they're a whole category. They have enough square footage that they sort of, while I'm looking at the square footage thing, you know, they're, they have a lot of square footage and they have a whole, the furniture category, this goods apparel, furniture, other, they kind of cover the whole demand for the region, you know, uh, being there. So, um,
It just is, it's just, you know, uh, as Jim says, we, we, you know, the frustration with being on the planning board is Montpelier, like the brownfields. You started taking it and doing something with it and they changed the law and, and they changing the law constantly. You had two fifty's changed a little bit. So you're writing a plan here for Pownell and, uh, Montpelier changed with the whole scope of things and it gets frustrating after a while. I've been on about ten years and, uh, you know, I've seen a lot of things happen. In general, we're positive though.
I hear you, I hear you, Jim, but, um, Montpelier's also got a lot of money. And, and, um, when I'm, when I talk to people like Joel Burns and they say, all we got to do is ask. I mean, the feds and the state government have so many grants right now for places that are like this or village centers designated as villages.
They do.
They just need someone to be interested in writing for these grant proposals. Um, that's our hurdle is, you know, how do we do that? Uh, people like Tara got enough to do. So, um, you know, how, how do we get in line?
That's a good thing.
I, I really haven't heard tonight someone say this is going to cost, uh, Pownell, you know, a couple of million dollars. I haven't heard that at all.
No.
I've heard that there's grant money out there and it's especially for these kinds of projects.
Um, we don't ask for, we're not going to get it.
We're not going to get it.
We're not going to get it, no.
This is a great foundation to a great initial start to lay the groundwork for.
Yeah, it's a plan, something to put your foot on, your toe on.
Hey, well, as far as, as far as the planning commission goes, I think once we get, uh, final reports on it, we can actually get our grips on to, go through it. Um, it'll be on a, the next meetings and stuff and working into next year, we'll, uh, be looking at that. So, uh, see what we can do about putting this all together and, and making those recommendations stuff to the select board to,
Yeah.
to get to.
Yeah, awesome.
Great.
And thanks for your interest. I mean, you guys got this, you kicked this gun, right? Didn't you get this, get these guys working? Appreciate that.
Yeah, to get that flow.
I think it's the son who did a good job for us here. He's a good man.
I'll let him know.
I gotta say, I've, I've looked around this area for forty years and there's a lot that I've seen and just accept as what is. And what I really appreciate about this report is it showed me some opportunities that I hadn't even thought were possible. That whole idea of slowing down the traffic by five miles an hour so we could put some crosswalks and get the traffic going through and let people see the businesses. I think that's a huge opportunity that, you know, and I don't know how fast that can happen and what the obstacles are. I'm sure they're many. But as, as a visioning piece for how we can start to make the commercial district successful, maybe get some more businesses, which means more tax revenue. Um, this seems like a, a huge opportunity. So I'm, I'm very appreciative of the work you did, just to open my eyes.
Well, that's the inexpensive part, right? That just painting the lanes, right?
Well, I mean, it's state road. So you have, there's, there's hurdles, I'm sure. But the fact that that could generate so many other opportunities over time, um, is very exciting to me.
You got a school, I go fast through a school.
Correct.
I mean, that's the first thing to start. We've got a school here. Why are you telling us you give them crosswalks? To slow these people down. And, uh, we talked with the sheriff quite a bit and, uh, hey, they're here watching people go speeding. I've never seen them write too many tickets. And the money thing, if they don't, uh, pass my store, it's eighty miles an hour up the hill. Okay, no question about it. Sixty, you lost. But anyway, if they write a ticket on Route Seven, the money goes to Montpelier. If, if I have Pownell, then money stays in town.
So some of the things like narrowing the lanes and doing other visual cues to help people slow down. And I, from the north, I think that's already to a degree there, it could be improved. From the south, I'm not quite sure. We're going up the hill and we're putting on the gas. And, uh, there's not a visual cue to slow us down. So I'm curious if there, and I'm not asking for a not answer now, but how you would help people get the thought of slowing down before they got to that hoped for crosswalk at Burlington?
One of the things we're hoping with, with having three, um, lit crosswalks that, you know, blink here that people will approach them, they'll start to see them, oh, now I'm approaching something that's important. They'll see the one in the middle, uh, Barbara Pond Road, and they'll say, I'm still somewhere that's important. And then, you know, they'll see the school street one and they'll say, okay, well now, now I'm leaving that place, you know, and we are, we are exiting and going more towards that, um, less of a, you know, less of a street and more of a road where I am, you know, driving, uh, you know, at, at a faster speed and going from my place to another place.
I like that term traffic. I, I think the, the south one was good, would be the, is going to be the more difficult one because the speed is top of the hill at that, you had to start slowing down. Right, by Irish Pond Road is where they start slowing down. So you're, you're already past this point right here of the, the whole park and everything. So good time you really start slowing down. So it would have to be a state thing to change. Try to get people slowed down further down the hill, which I don't know how that'll work out.
I, I wonder if you could like, uh, instead of having a crosswalk there, have people cross at Barbara Pond Road and just stay on that side of the road until it hit Dorrington, you know, you could widen the shoulder a little bit there and just skip that third crosswalk and still kind of get everyone where they're trying to go.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's that.
The right of way is a little bigger on the other side of the street, which is why we made this recommendation. But again, whatever the town ends up going, as long as the principle of connectivity is there and the principle of safety is there, you know, that's really where we're going.
That makes a lot of sense.
Perfect.
Anybody else have any quick questions or? If not, I think.
Might get motion to adjourn, but we're not.
We don't make any motion. We appreciate everything that you're coming down and doing all.